Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting in Independent School District 544 to order due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, and the guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting and the Ferguson Falls School District School Board meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021. And with that, can we get a roll call for a quorum, please, clerk?
Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Miss Hermes, here. And Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Oh, I'll second.
Okay, we'll take Missy. And second by Melanie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number D is a resolution acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. This is a thank you to Barry and Pamela Betcher for the donation to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals.
And do we have a second on that resolution?
I'll second that.
Kirby, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to item E under reports, we have Kirby Anderson, the 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Okay. Nothing on finance tonight. We'll have the Treasurers' report and bills coming up a little bit later. On the foundation, the foundation did have their April meeting right before our first board meeting in April, and I recorded that then. Their May meeting is this Thursday. Just some background now, what the foundation is doing is they are putting together their basically, they're putting together their meeting notes, sending them off to all the board members, and doing their, doing the meeting online, all the voting and everything, by email. And they are, again, scheduled to do that this week. Thursday would be our regular meeting day this Thursday. There have been, quite a few things happen, though there's been a lot of evaluations that have been coming back in from our, from our teaching staff. For instance, Denise Wies, John Damuth, Dennis Wetzke, Derek Hanson, all submitted evaluations on the grants that they got from, from the foundation. Josh McGowan, Kim Lawbottany, Josh Aronberg, Caitlin Lewis, Krista Seymgard, Sarah Kinraid, Roy Anderson, Sarah Christensen, and the last one that I had was Rats and Paul Rats, Scott Cumrow, Taylor Norberg, Mois Amundson. And so just for instance, Scott Rats, he sent his in, and basically, we did, we did the weight room with the grant that they got from the foundation. So he sent a nice two-page evaluation. And so the evaluations help the board, the foundation board, to, in evaluating future requests for grants, to make better decisions. And they also are a good way to see that we're making a difference from the foundation's standpoint. So we appreciate what they're doing, and appreciate that they follow up, and thank the teachers for, for what they're doing to complete the loop. That's all I have.
Questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Activities?
Activities Committee has not met, so there's nothing to report there. Special Education Cooperative met today, and the Director of the Special Education Cooperative, Shannon Erickson, spoke about the annual checkouts and getting the electronics back and updating those. It'll be a little different this year, trying to figure that out, but she'll, she'll be pursuing that with staff at the end of the school year. Big change for the Special Education Cooperative is a new service provider for the forms that they use. And so these, this should simplify things a little bit. And so they'll be doing that transition on top of all the other transitions lately. But, but anyway, she said she's pleased with the product that they've chosen. Otherwise, just regular personnel and financial on that. And then with Region One, there was nothing of particular note in that meeting, just an update on the services that, that cooperative provides to the school districts, and the staffing and finances and everything flows very smoothly in that world. So, so that's about all that I have.
Questions for Melanie? Just one question on the Special Ed Co-op on the staffing for caseloads and stuff like that. Has COVID-19 made anything more difficult to, in a sense of evaluating for staff for next year wise, and who's coming in and going out of the districts and stuff like that?
You know, the staff employees, there didn't seem to be any glitch there. Today, we approved hiring a new classroom teacher for the, what's that called?
Self-contained.
Self-contained, yeah. So that was a big deal. That's a difficult position. And, but otherwise, I'm not sure how much analysis has gone into the pairs and, and the services for next year just yet, honestly. So.
Any other questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, staff development and policy?
Staff development did not meet in May. We're going to be meeting on June 1st, though. And by that time, we'll already be able to start looking at the proposals for training, staff development for the coming school year. And any monies that wasn't used this year is going to roll over into next year. So a lot of teachers weren't able to go to the trainings they had wanted to go here. And so that money is not lost, and they'll be able to use it next year. Let's see. And then under policy, we've met a few times, the Policy Committee has, in the last few weeks. And we did go over a number of policies that will be changing and looked at those. Some of them were, had quite a, you know, I don't say a dramatic change, but a large change. So things like the, you know, maintaining a tobacco-free environment and student medication and so on. And then also, we looked at a number of policies in regards to curriculum, and thank Kerry, our Curriculum Director, for looking at that with us.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knudsen, wellness, buildings and grounds?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Wellness has not formally met, but Jen and I have been just staying in touch in regards to some of the mental health aspects of the whole COVID piece and trying to keep tabs on the staff and students. And then we just, last week, we just wrapped up our Two Weeks of Three Good Things Initiative, and Jesse Thurstad was kind of my liaison with the school district in helping and promoting that. And that was a request of someone from the district to get that ball rolling again. So I think the district and those that were involved within the community enjoyed that. I, we had over 1,500 responses in the two weeks that that rolled out, so that was fun to see. As far as buildings and grounds, we're going to be accepting some bids tonight for the tennis courts, some fencing at Cleveland and the KSS parking lot. And then I think we're all pretty excited that Lincoln School is moving forward, and we have a tentative timeline on that project. So we'll see where we go from here with that. And then I know there has been talk to formally get the Buildings and Grounds Committee together, just to discuss some future projects and see where to go from there. But nothing, nothing formal, I guess.
Any questions for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. Under my reports, Lake Country Service Co-op Board, we, we meet this Thursday, so I have nothing to report new for them. And then the Minnesota High School League, they did meet February, um, excuse me. They met Friday, April 24th. And just a couple of highlights that were discussed and approved is, one is in gymnastics, that they approved a 17th event, and that is to determine an interconference or introconference champion, similar to many other team sports. So that was an additional meet that they decided to approve. And the other thing is they approved boys volleyball, and adding boys volleyball as a league activity effective the spring of 2022. So that is something that is coming a couple years from now, but for those sports that are active in that. And then the other thing that they did talk about and approve was just some changes in the summer for student contact with coaches and students to have the period of non-contact, is they reduced that down to July, from July 3rd through the 5th. And they also extended the summer contact with coaches to players from June 1st all the way through August 7th. And so that was just a couple changes that they approved as a board. So, and the rest of it was, was basically just some routine business that they were approving. So, any questions for me? Okay, Steve Vigasa, Lake's Level Liaison, meeting confer and Curriculum Review?
Okay. So legislative, kind of, most of the reports. So, you know, we're in a stay-at-home order until the 18th. School is virtual for the rest of the year. They are, they are going to be ending their session, I think, Thursday, so like this requires a little bit of, I'll be having our report next, next month. They did approve a big spending bill for the COVID-19 funding, 208 million, of which 27 million of that was for grant programs to funding distance learning. And I think Jared was going to talk a little bit about that in his report, wasn't starting with that. As far as the state economic outlook came out, and it's not as due as it was before. We went, we're going to be facing almost a $2.4 billion deficit. And now, these numbers can change, and they always, they always tend to change, you know, to kind of give an outlook, you know, with $2.4 billion deficit, I'm sure they'll figure something out with that, but that's, that's about a $4 billion swing. We're looking at about a $2 billion surplus, you know, with us. As far as legislative, you know, there's a bunch of bills being introduced, but I don't like to talk about bills because they might not be filed. They might not be passed, but we'll know, next month, they'll have a much more report on because they'll be finishing their session. As far as the meet confer, we have not met or conferred. We don't have one scheduled, just with everything going on. We did talk a little bit about Curriculum Review when we had our policy meeting the other day. And that is something that we want to, we're going to try to figure out how to get going again. It's, you know, we were kind of, we've gotten over the initial shock of COVID-19 and having to read, do the way we educate. But now, it's, still a lot of work to be done with Curriculum Review, especially with just the strategic planning, the review committee. We were making some really good headway with, with that in terms of developing a program or exact, adopting a program that would be school-wide for social, social, emotional learning. So everybody, every teacher's going to speak in the same language, every pair is speaking the same language, and it's just a very uniform way of handling conflict and, you know, different, different things that are going on in the district. We're pretty close with that, but we're, we had a pandemic happen in the middle of that, so we're going to, Kerry Thompson and Jeff and the communities, find a way to make that work. And that is about it for my reports.
Any questions for? Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Superintendent Drake?
All right, good evening. A few things now that we're rapidly approaching the end of the school year. Both McKinley, Adams, and Cleveland are planning parades where the students and their immediate families would get into cars. And then they're basically going to circle the block of the appropriate school while the staff is appropriately social distancing outside and waving and greeting the kids and wishing them a happy summer and thanking them for what we tried to make a good, but rather unusual, school year. So that will kind of be the farewell on the evening of May 27th, or excuse me, 28th. And those parades will run, give or take, about 4:30 to 6:30 on that evening. The ALC has its graduation ceremony, which will be virtual, also on Thursday, May 28th, at 7 o'clock. So we're looking forward to that. And then on the high school side, graduation ceremony, virtual, on Friday, May 29th, 7:00 PM, at some point later that evening. Well, first, I should probably say that we've just finished up working out an agreement with the radio station to broadcast the event. They will offer some commentary, they'll take music requests from the seniors, and they basically will cover the event all the way through the fireworks show at the fairgrounds. So we're excited about that. Once the virtual graduation ceremony has been streamed, at some point later on, the evening of the 29th, the students and their immediate families will gather in the parking lot in their vehicles. And for safety purposes, we will ask that everyone remain in their vehicles. And then the senior class will parade down to the fairgrounds, and that will be by invitation only to be admitted, because it is a special event to honor our seniors. And there will be a fireworks show at dusk, so we're looking forward to all those things. There'll be some prize giveaways, and hopefully, it'll be a little different venue, but an exciting evening, recognizing the accomplishments of our senior class just the same. We did, did get some good news on the funding side. There'll be some federal dollars that will come our way to help offset some of the additional expenses with the COVID-19 pandemic. We're looking to receive, although no timelines have been given to us, hopefully somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000, again, to help offset some of the costs. So for us, it's very, very appropriate, given the investment in the Chromebooks that we had in order to make this an effective distance-learning venue for our students. So those dollars will be put to very good use. We're talking a lot about logistics and kind of closing up shop at the end of the year. And what do we want turned in? Who needs to turn it in? And when do we want it turned in? Given that we're still in a highly infectious period in the state, there is a lot of care and concern given to handling materials, et cetera. Right now, what we know for sure, of course, is with our seniors graduating, they will need to turn in their Chromebooks, their band instruments, choir robes, textbooks, those kinds of things, and their, and their, get their items in a, in a good standing here for their diploma. We absolutely need the touchscreen Chromebooks, those are the 300E models, so we will need to have any student that was issued one of those turn it in. And we're looking at Thursday and Friday of that, of that first week of June as being the two dates for that. Textbooks, we will probably worry about at a later date. But we do have, have some things in the works there, because at some point, we do need to collect those materials, anticipating a redistribution of the curriculum and support for next year's start of the school year. But we just want to make sure we can do that with safety, both to our students, families, and staff. And then on the staff development side, we've had a couple of different events where the teachers that need it, there are close to 80 of them, the cultural competency training. One day, we had a snow event, and the other day, we had the COVID-19. And so we took two stabs at that, and it didn't work out. But we do have, through Ed Minnesota, they are allowing us to do this virtually. We have about 60 teachers that are going to take advantage of it. There will be three sessions plus reflection, and they will be able to get this done basically by the end of May. So that's really going to work out pretty flexible on the side of the staff. With that, I just want to share again my thanks and appreciation to the staff for their fine work, but also to our students and families. We know this isn't easy, so appreciate you hanging in there and all the help you've given your students on the parent side and students, the extra work you've put in making this distance learning an effective, effective experience. So with that, that will conclude my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
I've got a couple of questions on the fireworks thing. I know it's still early planning and it hasn't been finalized, but when you say invitation only, is it, is it just going to be students and families? Are there any teaching staff or, I mean, board members or, I mean, principals? What are we thinking?
I would, so I don't have the details on that. I know that the students will be issued an admittance document, and so that will be checked as they enter into the fairgrounds.
Sure.
I'll get some details and get that out. I'm assuming there will be certainly some administration, school board, and staff present, present at that event.
The other question I had, you talked about especially the seniors turning in their Chromebooks and the touchscreens and their instruments and everything. And so you said first week in June, that Thursday is June 4th. I think the tentative time for handing out diplomas was sometime that one, so it was, they have to turn in their-
In conjunction.
They have to turn in their stuff before they get their diploma.
Yes. So June 2nd, 3rd are the turn-in days for the seniors, 4th and 5th for the underclassmen. And so they turn their Chromebook in, they'll get their diploma and-
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
No, thanks for the, asking for the clarification.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the April 27th regular school board meeting. Bills and Treasury report?
Yes. Melanie Cole and I did sit down and go through the, the bills with Blake. And as far as the Treasury's report goes, our fund balance, our beginning balance was just, just about $9 million, and now it's 9.7 million. So we had a few more receipts than we did money going out, so our, our cash numbers are looking good. As far as the bills, we did go through them fairly detailed. We had some, some questions for Blake, which we did answer. A couple of highlights that I thought I'd go that I marked down. We had some painting supplies, we had a couple of different bills for, you know, not, not big numbers, $800 or $900 at Sherman Williams a couple of different times, but I think if we walk around, look at the buildings, I know some of the pairs have been helping, there's been a lot of painting going on. When the students have been gone, there's been a lot of updates to make to the building. I think Roosevelt was probably the one that you'll notice the most, it's been some, some little improvements. So we want to thank the folks that have been, the Casserio staff and some of the people that wouldn't normally be doing that kind of work, but they've been doing a nice job. We also spent with Cassette Electric, we brought almost $9,000 on, in lighting, and so replacing fluorescents with ballast with LEDs, and, and then those have been turned into our top tower for, for rebate. We did have a bill for about $3,400 on computer repairs. We do have a number of Chromebooks that have had to be repaired. The most common thing that goes wrong with them is cracked screens, not surprising. Average repair bill is about $45 right now for those. So that was one that we looked at. We had a security door put in at Adams, that was just over $6,000 to upgrade our security team over there. We talked a little bit about Lake's Country Service and the ECFE bill that I think we have, we're going to talk about that in one of our work sessions, so I'll leave that one for now. And Liberty, our copy machines were, were like $9,000 to $12,000 over our contract amount because of the number of copies that have been being run. So, so we kicked around some ideas there, and Blake has been doing some homework, and so we'll be looking at when our contract is up in a year, do we want to, we do the contract with the same vendor we have now, or do we open up the bids? And then that might be a subject for a future work session to talk about possibly doing chargeback type, where people have to use a card to, to use copy machines to see if, where, where all the copies are going. I think, had a little boiler issue with McKinley for $1,000, again, more painting supplies than the $2,600, so I think we did spend over $3,500 on painting supplies. And about $2,000 to Verizon to get additional hotspots for people to do distance learning. And then Blake also informed us about the $300,000 that we can see from, to go towards our Chromebooks for the COVID, and so that's good news. And I think we'll talk later about the bids on the tennis court, so I'll leave that one off, too. All right. Any questions for Kirby?
Any questions? Thank you, Kirby. Personnel, Elaine Jenkey?
Yes, and we just have one item under Personnel tonight, and that's the Certified Staff Resignation of David Runn, who was an elementary teacher at Kennebec Secondary School effective May 8th, and so I'd recommend this for board approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Melanie, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There is no old, old business. Moving on to new business. Item number one is to set the regular meal rate for FY '21 to $2.65 per lunch for grades K through 5, and $2.80 per lunch for grades 6 through 12, in accordance to the federal paid lunch equity calculation, and one, and then $1.25 for breakfast. And that is going up a nickel, and it hasn't moved in about 10 years.
FY, yeah, FY '09 was the last time it was, so it's been about 10 years.
So with that, do, so we want to offer that motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Melanie, second. Any discussion? Blake, do you want to just talk on it just real quick about just why we're doing it?
So the weighted average across the nation, what the Department of Air Culture sets is at $3.09, so every year that we're under it, we're required to increase it by the weighted average of the percentage that they're giving you, which is 4.94 this year. Every year, we've been continually doing 10 cents. You can either do 10 cents or the percentage that the government's giving you. So I'm staying consistent with that, and I figured, since we haven't adjusted our breakfast, our breakfast prices for over 10 years, I figured it was time to increase the nickel, which is a little bit progress.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two. Blake, do you want to talk about this first before we- we enter the motion?
So we got, so we got two bids. One from Pearson, one from Asphalt Preservation Company. Pearson came in about 140, and Asphalt Preservation came in about 130, $129,706. Mark had initially budgeted $320,000 for this whole project. So we came in significantly lower. But this one, this does include the contract for more, which is about 10, $10 on top of that. So we're saving quite a bit of money on this with this project. So that will just improve our capital project expenditure budget going forward.
Do you have an anticipation start date? Did they give you a dollar or not?
I do not. We are actually, we contacted Asphalt Preservation, and we're getting that all lined up currently. I will follow up with more dates and deadlines as we go forward. It sounds like a pretty straightforward project. It's just getting the subcontractors lined. This will be my first, pretty much, I'll be taking chances all the way through. So I'll get better at getting deadlines and timelines and stuff like that together. But as soon as possible.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the, accept the bid from Asphalt Preservation Company, Inc. in the amount of $129,706 to rebuild the KSS tennis court, the playground fence at Cleveland, and seal coating of Kennedy Secondary School parking lots?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Melanie, a second from Missy. Any discussion? Except it's nice to see a bid actually come in lower than anticipated. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is a revision to the current school board policies. And I'm just going to read the numbers of the policies. These will be online if you want to take a look at them after the minutes will be posted, and you can look at them accordingly. The policies are 414, 419, 516, 532, 601, 603, 613, 615, 616, 618, 703, 721, and 802. Somebody offer a motion to approve those policy changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Take Missy for a second. Any discussion?
These are mostly just following MSBA recommendations, right?
Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four is the first reading of the new policy, 713, Student Activity Accounts. And so there's no action on this at this meeting. We'll take action in our next board meeting. Item number five is a, an agreement between ISD 544 and Martin Mechanical Design, Inc. for the consulting engineering services for the Cleveland School HVAC improvements, subject to an energy savings payback of seven years or less. Would somebody offer that motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, too.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six is we are going to be going into a closed session permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to discuss negotiation strategies related to the district negotiations with the Minnesota School Employee Association, custodial and secretarial personnel. Following that, we will reopen the meeting. And then we will be concluding, that's what, that will conclude our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Tuesday, May 26 at 7:00 a.m. So note the date and the time right here at the Media Center, Kennedy Secondary School. Following that, we will go into a work session to talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, Childcare, and Staff Survey. With that, do I have a motion to go into a closed session?
So moved.
Missy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kirby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are in a closed session.